Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the September 15th, 2023 in-person meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez and I am the chairman of the ZBA. I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. First, I hereby designate alternate member Ann McDonald to take Angela Brooks's place as a regular member at today's meeting. And I also hereby designate alternate member Vishali Rao to take Zurich Esposito's place as a regular member at today's meeting. Welcome, Ann and Vishali. Next, I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioners, please confirm that you are present. Commissioner McDonald?
Present.
Commissioner Rao?
Present.
I am present. Quorum is established. The minutes of August meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Rao seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
I vote yes. The minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner McDonald's, Commissioner Rao seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
I vote yes. The agenda is approved. Now, I will take continuances and withdrawals. I do want to note that this morning, for the morning session, we only have three commissioners. So if that does play into your decision as to whether you would like a continuance, please step forward.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Robert Walker. I'm the attorney for application 336-23-S, 5405-11, West Madison Street.
Okay.
We're requesting a continuance until the 2:00 PM session today to give the Department of Planning a chance to review the recent plans we've sent in.
Sure. So calendar number 336-23-S will be continued to the 2:00 PM session today.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Corey Thompson-Burks. I'm the attorney who's filing objections in opposition to the application of Round and About Incorporated, case number 335-23-S. And I'm asking for a continuance to a date certain. I'm not familiar with your calendars, so I'm not sure about the date that you want us to request. I want to have some time for our organizations and other residential members to address the concerns that we have about this application.
Do we have the applicant's attorney?
Mr. Chairman, forgive me for interrupting. Good morning, counsel.
Good morning, Mr. Powell.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object. I'm here on schedule to be heard on this particular matter. I have our planning consultant, Mr. Mersowere. This is pretty late to ask for continuance. We've had the hearing, the hearing, we had, strike that, we had the public meeting. Mr. Mersowere, when was that? The public hearing for this? About a month ago. The Alderman's very much aware of it. There's been no opposition. As a matter of fact, I know, counsel, we spoke actually yesterday. I shared with her some information to let her know some particulars of this particular request. And then it's my understanding, in terms of someone trying to continue it, in terms that this late in the day, they do a FOIA request, precedent is that that is not granted. So for the record, I'm objecting. We'd like to have the opportunity to have my client put on her case as to why this board should approve her zoning request.
Response?
Yes, my continuance is not for a FOIA request. I did have the opportunity to speak with Mr. Powell. I did ask for certain information concerning primarily the economic disclosure documentation that is required by the application process and also for a dossier of the president of Round and About. Her name is Kimberly Robinson. Neither one of those things was forthcoming, and counsel and I communicated by way of email up until the late evening, and it was not received. So I would like to have some time, again, for the residents of this neighborhood to have some time to further investigation. I think further vetting is required.
Counselor, who do you represent?
I represent Round and About Doing Businesses.
I understand that. I was asking the opposition.
Members of our neighborhood. I'm a member of a block club.
Okay.
And so we've met with several people, and we just, I have memorialized my objections, which if, in the event that the board sees fit not to grant our continuance, I have memorialized my objections to this application.
When did you request this information from the applicant? The information that you're seeking for the continuance? When did you request that information from counsel Powell?
We talked yesterday.
And?
Oh, and is there a reason that you didn't reach out sooner? I mean, this has been, you know, pending for a while now.
Well, my personal response to that would be that we do not know that this application was going forth. That's my representation to the board. We do not know this application was going forth.
Anything further before I rule?
For the record, we gave her information that she asked for, to the best of my knowledge, late in the day yesterday. I see no practical reason not to allow this matter to go forth for you to have the opportunities was your fourth of board members to question my client thoroughly in terms of their proposal for this particular zoning request.
Okay, I'm going to deny the request for a continuance. Counselor, you can make your objection on the record when we call the case. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a good point, too. I guess we'll deal with that when we get to it.
Okay.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman, members. My name is Elvin Charity. I represent the applicant McDonald's Corporation with respect to application number 344-23-S. The site is 6336 South Ashland Avenue. I'm here to request a continuance on behalf of my client. We are still working out some issues with staff, so I'm requesting a continuance until October.
We can't do October, but we can do November. So this is calendar number 344-23-S will be continued to November 17, 2023, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rolando Alcosta here on behalf of the applicant for the second item on page 1, 322-23-S, requesting a continuance. We've come up with an alternative means by perhaps getting the approvals that we need, and so we'd like to explore that in hopes that we are successful and then can withdraw this in November.
Okay, so this is calendar number 322-23-S will be continued to November 17, 2023, and no further notice will be given.
I'll continue until you want to.
To 2:00 PM, correct.
So even the preceding?
Yes, the 2:00 PM session for 322-23-S as well as the 344-23-S. Those will both go to the 2:00 PM session of November 17, 2023. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Alley on behalf of the applicant in matter number 338-23-S, which is on the bottom of page 3, concerning 8137 to 47 South Racine. It is our understanding that Alderman Moore would ask that we conduct some additional community engagement on this matter, which we would certainly welcome. As a result, we would seek a continuance in this matter.
You said this?
I don't know that, I wouldn't say it's formally at his request. He has asked us to continue to engage, so this would be the applicant's request.
Okay, and you said this was 338, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is calendar number 338-23-S will be continued to November 17, 2023, the 2:00 PM session, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Any other continuances or withdrawals?
And just a quick question. Is there anybody here in objections to 5405 through 11 West Madison?
Oh, okay. All right, let's call the first case.
First case, 321-23-S, 2901 through, 2907 North Clark Street.
Okay. Again, we're calling calendar number 321-23-S. Go ahead and take a seat. Could you state your name and address, please?
I'm Brenda Salcedo, and I am the applicant of Mainly Cuts and Blowouts on 2907 Clark Street.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead, actually, first, let me swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number 321-23-S. Actually, Nancy, Nancy Radzovich. Okay, yeah, yeah. First, could you state your name and role, please?
Yes, Nancy Radzovich, Assistant Commissioner with the Zoning Bureau.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Please proceed.
This is for calendar number 321-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you very much. Okay, could you state your name again?
Brenda Salcedo.
Okay, and are you the applicant representative?
I got him on my phone now.
Yes.
Okay, are you? What's your relationship to Mainly Cuts and Blowouts LLC?
I am?
The manager?
Manager-owner, yeah.
Okay. So you're looking to open up a hair salon?
Yes.
Can you tell us about your experience in the business?
I have been a licensed cosmetologist for 11 years, been working at two different shops for 10 years, so I have experience.
A licensed cosmetologist?
Yep.
Okay. The hours that you intend on keeping?
Nine to seven, Monday through Friday, and eight to three on the weekends.
Okay. Do you intend to hire employees?
Yes.
How many?
I have two already.
Okay, and are they also licensed cosmetologists? Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
All right, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 323-23-S, 7562 North Milwaukee.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, okay. Let's see. Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Could you state your name and address, please?
My name's Sula Fasulayman, and the address 75, 7562 North Milwaukee Avenue, Chicago 60631.
Okay, are you the applicant representative?
Yes.
Okay, and how about, are you going to testify as well?
I am with her. I work with her and her daughter, Onella Albazie.
Here, why don't you just?
Oh, sorry.
Speak into the microphone, and if you could just say your name and address, please.
I am her daughter, Onella Albazie, 7562 North Milwaukee Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60631.
And do both of you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Nancy, if you could go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
This is for calendar number 323-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop provided prior to the issuance of a business license and/or certificate of occupancy. The required ornamental fence has been installed around the existing parking lot by the property owner, Sarah Zimmerman trustee of Sarah Zimmerman Trust, in accordance with 1711-0202-C to bring the site into compliance with the landscape ordinance. With the installation of the required ornamental fence, the department finds that this proposal will comply with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the barber shop will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed barber shop is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
All right, Ms. Solomon?
Yes.
Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Okay, could you, so you're here to open up a barber shop, correct?
Yes.
And could you tell us about your experience in operating barber shops?
Yeah, I have experience over 15 years, and I owned my business for over six years. I've been working with someone else before, and I own my business now, and now I want to grow my business more in the city. So I have a lot of clients, so I need to do more bigger business. I want to make center.
Sure. And you're a licensed cosmetologist?
Yes.
Okay, and what are the hours that you intend on keeping?
Seven to 11, except Sunday off.
Eleven to seven.
Eleven in the morning, seven.
Yeah, eleven to seven.
Eleven in the morning to 7:00 PM?
Yeah.
Is that every day?
Every day, except Sunday off.
Except Sunday?
Off.
Okay. And are you intending on having employees?
Have just my daughter work with me, you know, just me.
So you and your daughter?
Yes.
She'll be working. I'll be assisting her with appointments and like cleaning the area and everything.
Appointments.
But she's licensed, and she'll be doing the barbering here.
Okay, so you're not, you won't actually be the one cutting hair?
I will not, no, I will be helping her in her business.
Sure. Okay, let's, I do want to talk a little bit about this recommendation, because we've seen this come up before with this ornamental fence requirement. Have you had conversations with the property owner about the ornamental fence?
Yes, they already spoke with the city.
And if you could just speak into that microphone so we make sure we get it. So tell me about the conversation, because the property currently doesn't have an ornamental fence around it, correct?
Yes.
And you've spoken with the owner. What does the owner say about building that ornamental fence?
They already has conversation together with the city. They have work on it.
She will, she wants to do, she's intending to do it, but she said that she has some money, like compromised, because she had just recently done the parking lot and made the lines more clear and everything, and added like, you know, some cement and stuff to make it more smooth. And she did talk to the Alderman and to the city, and she's intending to do it very soon, but we're still in the process of it. So we did talk to her, we informed her, and she is talking to Alderman about it.
And when you spoke with her, if you could just speak into that mic?
Yes.
When you spoke to her, did she indicate, you know, that the amount of time she needed to get the fence up?
She did not yet, but she did say that she is intending to do it very soon. I do have emails of her stating that she did for proof, if you would like.
Nancy, have you had any communications about the building of this ornamental fence?
What I'm going to do is defer to Joe Peña. Joe spoke directly with the property owner.
Okay, great. If you could first state your name and role?
Hi, good morning, counsel. My name is Joe Peña, city planner.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, so I've been in communication with the property owner to try to clarify what's possible at the property. The property owner stated that it would be a financial hurdle right now to install that ornamental fence, and so in our communications, they requested a grace period in order to be able to bring up the property to code.
And did they put a time on the grace period requested?
So on the, like informal communications that we had, they said two years grace period would be, would be possible.
Okay, any questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Bansuri Modi, and the property address or my address?
The property address is fine.
It's 5601 South Harlem Avenue, Unit D, Chicago, Illinois 60638.
Okay, and could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Nancy, if you could go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
Yep. So this is for calendar number 324-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Okay, so you're here to open up a hair salon?
It is existing salon, and the license expired during the pandemic time. So we had done the renewal process, and it, because it has expired, we had to reapply for the zoning permit.
Okay, so you were already in business and then the license expired?
Correct.
Okay.
Since 2013.
Okay, are you a licensed cosmetologist?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Great Clips, the business, and the cosmetologists are hired.
Okay, so the ones doing the hair, those are all licensed cosmetologists?
Yes.
Okay. And you're just looking to get the license back after it expired?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 325-23C, 7645 South St. Lawrence.
There we go. All right, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, are you, could you state your name, sir?
Kenneth Donner.
Okay, so you're the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, what brings you in today?
I'm here to get a variation for the pool.
Okay. Tell me about this pool. When was this pool built?
It was started in 2018.
Okay, and?
It was finished in 2019.
Okay, and did you hire a contractor to build it?
No.
You built it yourself?
Correct.
Did you obtain any permits to build the pool?
No.
Did you understand that you needed permits to build a pool in your backyard?
I was, I was in emailing with, me and my fiance was emailing with, what is his name? His name is, he was a commissioner of buildings or something, Howard Hutchinson, I believe his name is. And I was calling, emailing him, and he said, as long as it's not deeper than four feet, you don't need a permit. And when I looked it up, the first line that says, you don't need a permit if you're going less than four feet, if you're going four feet or less, you don't need a permit. So I was under the impression that I didn't need a permit.
Who told you that?
Howard, Howard Hutchinson. And it's on the website, the city's website. If you Google in-ground pools, it says, less than four feet, you don't need a permit.
And who is Howard Hutchinson?
He was in charge of, I don't know, this is Kareem Wustawir on behalf of the applicant. Hal Hutchins is a Department of Buildings employee who is in charge of planning examination.
You said that's Hal Hutchins? Is that what you said, his name?
Yeah, Hal Hutchins. Or Hutchinson, I don't recall.
Is it Hutchinson or Hutchins? Do you know?
Maybe Hutchinson.
Okay.
Let me see.
And? So he told you that you didn't need a permit?
Excuse me, it is Hutchinson.
Hutchinson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And he told you that? Okay. And he told you that you didn't need a pool if it was less than four feet deep? Or you didn't need a permit unless it was?
Over four feet.
Over four feet deep?
Right, right.
Have you any, had any conversations with your neighbors about the pool?
Before, after?
Before you built it?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and what did they say?
They was pretty much excited. They didn't, they was just, didn't think I can do it. So they was, uh, they was all for it.
Could you tell me what the, what the hardship is?
The hardship is the amount of money I invested into the pool and to, to get it done.
And can you explain how that is not self-created?
Because at the, when I was building the pool, I was under the impression that I was going by all city code. So I was, that's why I was making that investment.
What, what city codes did you review before you began construction?
I Googled in-ground pools for City of Chicago. And like I said, the first line on it is in black, it says, no permit is needed if it's less than 48 inches. So I was under the impression that I didn't need a permit and?
What's your, your, your background? Like, are you employed?
Yes.
Who's your employer?
City of Chicago. I'm a truck driver for City of Chicago.
You're a truck driver for the City of Chicago?
Yes.
Did you understand before you began construction that there were requirements with regard to how close your pool, even if it was less than four feet, how close that pool could be to your adjacent neighbors? Property lines?
No, I was unaware of that.
Any questions from the board?
So how deep is the pool?
It's 48 inches.
Okay, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you go to the skimmer, it's never 48 inches because the skimmer is like 30, 36. So it's always like 36 as far as the water level. It can only be 36.
Okay. And then how did you make the decision to? Well, let's, let me ask a different question. What is the material on the side of the, the pool there that I can kind of see? There's like a green, it looks like turf material, but what is it?
It's, um, it's called, it's like a outdoor carpet. That's what it is.
And what's underneath that?
On the, on the wood, half inch thick plywood.
Okay. And where it's adjacent to your neighbor's property line? What is, what's your relationship with that neighbor?
Oh, we're very good friends.
And, and what, what is the neighbor's feeling about this? Pool come into the side of the property line?
They're, they're okay with it. They use it as much as I, they, they use it like I do.
Okay, thanks.
I just had a couple of questions too. In terms of who is using it, you said your neighbors are using it?
Just really when I'm there and, you know, just to cool off in the summertime when it's, when it's hot outside. Hey, can we, you know, can we come over and get in the pool? You know, yes, if I'm there, yes.
Friends and family?
Right, exactly.
Okay. I see there's a porta potty in this picture. Is that a regular feature?
No, not, not really. I think I was having a family reunion there. So that's why the porta potty was there.
A union dinner?
Family reunion.
Oh, family reunion.
Family reunion, yeah. People coming from out of town and everywhere.
I see, I see. And you said that the neighbor to the south, I guess it's 7651, has no issue with how close the pool is to their property?
None whatsoever.
And what is the pool itself lined with?
Half inch thick PVC, slabs of PVC, four by eight slabs.
And how is the water, how do you fill the pool?
With the water hose.
With the hose?
Yes.
So that once the water's in, there's no circulation or?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Once the pool's filled, that water stays in there. There's no circulation, there's no drainage. It's just?
It's a, it's a filter. It's built just like an above ground pool, but it sits like two feet in the ground. So it goes to a filter and filters back in.
Got it. Okay. Have you had any trouble with any water leaking out of the pool?
No.
Thank you.
Do you have any experience in construction?
In carpentry, yes. And I've had a pool before. So I've, I've seen how somebody else built a pool for me 15 years ago. So I was aware of how it was done.
You, you saw someone else build a pool for you 15 years ago? Is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay. Your background in carpentry, tell us about it.
That I learned from father and uncles. They, they built and I helped and went along with that.
The, the photo, the one that's looking west from the rear lot? So the one on the, on the left side on the screen, is that a, is that a? Is that a utility line running over the pool? Like? You see that, that utility line above the pool? Is, is that, does that actually travel over the pool?
No, it doesn't. No. It's, 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 uh, no, it runs, it runs like over. It doesn't run, it's not close to the pool. I can't say.
If, if these variances were not approved, sir, what would you do?
I, I guess do whatever I have to do. I mean, I don't know.
Have you, have you considered a plan that would make the pool within the traditional boundaries of your lot? Have you evaluated whether, what that would cost or what the options would be to do that?
No, I haven't.
Can you, can you or your colleagues say anything about?
How much?
The cost or effort that would be required in order to ensure that the pool did not necessitate the variance?
I think I can address that.
Sure.
Yeah. My name's Kareem Musawwir. I'm a land planner and zoning consultant here in Chicago. And I, I've been working with Mr. Donner to get this application before you today. So despite his best efforts to do this properly, indicating that he was not actually building a swimming pool, but a cooling pool, and he ended up with just one corner of the pool in violation of the setback. And that is the reason for us being here today, which is instead of six feet, it's 5.46 feet. And that's just one corner of the pool. In event that, he was not able to prevail before you today. In order to correct that, he'd have to add another layer to the interior of the pool in order to build out that five, build it out so that it's at least six feet from his neighbor's property line.
And so is, do you have any sense of what the cost would be to modify the pool such that it would not require the variances?
Probably, probably 20, probably 15, 20,000 to move it.
And when you drain the, and I assume you'd have to drain, do you drain the pool in the winter?
Correct, yes.
How do you drain it?
To, the catch basin inside the house. I run a hose from the, from the filter to inside the house.
Okay. So you drain the pool and then you'd have to rebuild it essentially? And that would cost 15 to 20,000 dollars, you estimate?
Correct.
When you spoke with Hal Hutchinson about the building of the pool, did you discuss the setbacks that you would have to comply with when you built it?
No, I didn't. I didn't even know what a setback was. No. I was just asking.
I have a problem with this one.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
As indicated, a less than four foot pool such as this is not a required, it does not require a permit. And so the construction of it?
It has to comply with all the codes.
Has to comply with the setbacks. However, the, it's only one point of the pool that does not comply and that's just one corner. And it is less than a, it's, it's, it's less than seven inches off. So I know some good, very good contractors who have problems with that type of length of construction and keeping it straight. But this is a, a, a matter that would be more disturbing, I believe, to his neighbor than it would be to anyone else in the event that he had not met the setback requirement. But the neighbor's in favor.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. There are two setbacks at issue, correct?
No.
There is the side yard setback. That's at issue. That is a variance from 18 to 8.11. And then I think the, the south side setback is what you're referring to, the six to 5.46.
Right.
Are you aware that there are two issues on this, on the variations?
No. Again, my understanding is that the only point of the variation is to the 5.46 setback. And the combined setback from 18 feet to 8.11 feet is the fact that the house, his house is the other issue of the setback. So in event that this was a pool out in the open, it would be a setback requirement of 18 inches or 18 feet.
So the existing house structure is, I assume the house is what, 100 years old or something?
Correct.
And that's causing the combined side setback issue?
Yes.
And you're saying that the side of the pool is kind of diagonal? So the western edge of the pool is actually over six feet far from the side yard? And then it kind of is on a diagonal?
Right. It's, it's just the southern point itself. Correct.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead.
The, the, well, the pool was actually built for me and my kids and grandkids to, to just enjoy and, and to have something to do instead of. City of Chicago is kind of dangerous. So we just, just for us to have a place to, to entertain each other and have a place to go. And they enjoy coming over, getting in the pool and kicking it with granddad. And, and, you know, it, to me, it's, 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 it's a joy to see my eight grandkids happy of something that I built. And, you know, they had part in it because they was going and doing stuff with me, you know, having, having to do this. And they enjoy this. And so that's why I'm fighting hard trying to keep a pool for something that, you know, that we got sentimental value for. Because I've invested a lot of money into this just to, just to keep it. Even, even now, I'm trying to, you know, fight to, to pay and to, to keep it. You know, if I didn't knew that I was going through all, that I did it wrong, I was trying to go by line. That's why I was talking to Hal Hutchins. I was trying to do it right from the start, beginning, from the beginning. I thought I didn't build it correctly. I didn't know about a setback. If I didn't knew I did what was needed to be done for the setback. But now it's just a bit to swallow to have to go and redo anything over again. I can't, I can't afford it myself, myself.
I appreciate you sharing that, you know, we are constrained by the ordinances of the city in terms of what we can consider, you know, so.
Yeah. Commissioner McDonald's right about that. You know, the issue is, I mean, I get the emotional side of it. That's not what's before us though. What's before us is, you know, whether this complies with the zoning code and if you need a variation, you know, what the hardship is. And the problem that I'm having right now is I'm, I don't see how this was not self-created. How you didn't create this hardship by building without the proper permits. Go ahead.
Again, he would not be, have been required to provide a permit, but he is required to provide the setbacks.
That was me calling Hal to, if I needed a permit, I thought he would, he'd want to say, yes, you need a permit for this. You know, I talked to him, emailed him a few times on everything, you know. I had a machine in there. How long can a machine stay? Like, can it stay overnight? You know, this, I, I, me and my fiance kept emailing back and forth. So it, it wasn't like I was trying to go around the permit. That I wasn't trying to do.
But I mean, Hal's not here, right? I mean, he's not a witness here.
I can show you emails.
It's, it's not part of the record. You didn't submit it with your application or your findings of fact. All right, Mr. Donner, we're going to pass this case, okay? I want you to talk with the city attorneys here and, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll come back. We're going to, we're going to recall this case. But right now, we're going to pass it, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Next case, 32623S, 5003 West Lawrence.
That's what I was thinking. I can't tell if that's if then. Is that where? Looks like they're measuring to the actual. This is, I think this is the.
All right. Good morning. All right. I'm going to go ahead and read the Department of Planning's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number 326-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed. of the proposed massage establishment, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Mongolian Massage Therapy Spa One, Inc., and the establishment maintains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade, which shall not be painted over, darkened, or obstructed in any way so that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street." "Will everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?"
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please proceed.
Good morning, Board. Today, we have two applicants. One is the owner of the property and as well as the president of Mongolian Massage Therapy. Today, their, their application is requesting for a special use for establishment of a spa establishment. They are owners, as of right now, they have a spa establishment in Skokie, similar to the one that they're hoping to open at this property as well. They've been in business for the past six years. Similar to the, to their current business, they're hoping to open Monday through Sunday, about ten to eight P.M. Both the owner as well as his wife, who is sitting on his left right here, are licensed massage therapists and estheticians. They're planning to have, in this space, as you can see, it's a two-floor. The first floor is a commercial space, and the second floor is a single-family residential unit. Currently, on the second floor, there is tenants living there. However, both the applicant and his wife intend to move into that space once construction and completion of the first floor for the massage establishment is complete. Additionally, on this property, there is going to be very minimal developments or any type of demolition, mostly in the interior area, which is going to be constructed to fit the space of their spa establishment, which includes fi, four rooms, a waiting reception area, a restroom, as well as a shower room.
Okay. If you could have your witnesses swear to their affidavits.
Sure.
And then, we'll open it up for board questions.
Sure. So, this is for, first, we're going to start with the applicant, Mr. Temulyn Yozubren. I apologize if I mispronounced it. Okay. You submitted an application on May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, to the ZBA to establish a massage establishment at the property of five zero zero-three West Lawrence Avenue. If you were to testify today, would your answers be the same or similar to your affidavit that you submitted? And on my right, I just want to also acknowledge that on my right is his wife, who is going to act as his interpreter.
Oh.
His native language is Mongolian.
Okay. So, for, for, for the interpreter, if you could raise your right hand again. What's the, first of all, what's the language?
Mongolian.
Mongolian?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you swear to accurately translate Mongolian to English and English to Mongolian to the best of your ability? Okay. Thank you very much.
Would you like me to repeat that question again to Mr. Temulyn for his wife to translate?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's, let's do it through the translator.
Okay. Amina, I'm going to ask it again, okay? Okay. Mr. Yozubren, you submitted an application on May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, to the ZBA. Yes.
Yeah. And, and you, you actually, you have to say, you have to translate the answers back.
I translated back into English, okay? Yes, okay. And to establish a massage spa establishment at the property five zero zero-three West Lawrence?
You have to say the answer as well.
You have to, you have to say the answer.
Oh, yes. He said, yes, yeah.
Would your testimony to be today be consistent with your answers or be in the same and similar answers to your application and affidavit?
Yes.
And on the right of Mr. Temulyn as well, we have George Kiesel. He is an urban planner and architect.
And the board recognizes Mr. Kiesel's expertise.
And Mr. Kiesel, if you were to test, continue, if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with your findings and conclusions contained in your report specifically to this property at five zero zero-three West Lawrence Avenue?
Yes, they would.
Okay. I, I have a question about the, the shower room. Is that just, is that for employees or is that for customers?
It is for employees. So, the reason why they included a shower in that area specifically is because the type of services they provide is massage establishment, which fumes and smells and oils and dirts are very, very important to, to both employees' hygiene as well as the patrons. So, the shower is for the employees who are commuting far away or biking or taking long walks, especially during summer, to wash up and clean themselves prior to, to their start of the day.
Okay. And that's, so that's not for the customers?
No, it's not for the customers, specifically for the employees.
Okay. And if we were to include a condition that the shower was not to be used by the customers, the applicant would be okay with that?
Okay. Amina, you have to translate too.
Yes.
I'd also like to acknowledge that at the date of, at the time of the application, the owner, Mr. Michael Pavelone, he owned, he owned that property, and he submitted an affidavit. But since then, as of August, just of last month, the family purchased the property, and it's in their name. And we have paperwork today to also present it to as well.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah. Does the owner intend to have employees?
Yes. Right now, there are three intended full-time staff. This include both the two individuals here, the husband and wife, the applicant and his wife, and another licensed esthetician.
Okay. And everyone, everyone who will be providing the services will be licensed appropriate, everyone providing the services will be licensed appropriately?
Yes.
And could you remind me of the hours?
The hours are scheduled as of right now, Tuesday to Sunday, ten to eight P.M., with hopes of extending it to seven days a week, depending on how the service is going. Currently, at their current location in Skokie, they are on Monday through Sunday, ten to ten P.M.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right. We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Next case, three twenty-seven, twenty-three S, three thirteen, South California.
Good morning. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number three twenty-seven dash twenty-three dash S. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the dog boarding kennel and daycare, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Chasing Tales For You, Inc. Two, the maximum number of dogs being cared for at any one time is limited to fifty, of which maximum of sixteen will be boarded within the kennels. Three, each dog boarded within the kennel is provided with a cage or separate individual enclosure. Four, the facility and staffing levels will comply with section four dash thirty-eight dash sixty-B of the Municipal Code of Chicago. And five, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan and first-floor plan dated September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, the second-floor plan dated November one, twenty-twenty-two, and the exterior side elevations dated September seven, twenty-twenty-three, all prepared by Craft Architecture LLC, and the operating procedures dated September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three." "Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?" Thank you very much. Counselor Barnes, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and esteemed members of the board. For the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm an attorney with the Lofts's of Sam Banks. I am happy to be here this morning on behalf of the applicant, Chasing Tales For You Incorporated. Here with me today is the owner and president of Chasing Tales, Ms. Tricia Engel, as well as our M.A.I. certified appraiser, Terry O'Brien, and the project architect, Chris Dassie.
And the board recognizes Mr. O'Brien's expertise.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We're here today seeking a single special use in order to establish a members-only doggy daycare facility at the subject site, which will include overnight boarding for dogs. Ms. Engel has owned and operated a similar facility in this same neighborhood for the last seventeen years. She's very actively involved in the day-to-day operations. Oh, eleven years, excuse me. And she is currently leasing her other space and got an opportunity to actually purchase this property and own it. And in fact, if approved here today, would be moving her primary residence to above the new doggy daycare facility. So, she will quite literally be actively involved twenty-four-seven basis. Towards that end, she was also, in order to effectuate the program, she was recently awarded a grant through the City of Chicago Neighborhood Opportunity Fund that is contingent as well on the approval of this special use. So, this has been a two-year journey for Ms. Engel. And I told her, even though she's waited two years, that the best we can hope for is short form here today and that this is anticlimactic. So, with that, we will rest on our findings, and I'll just introduce the witnesses.
Let's do that. Thank you.
Ms. Engel, if you wouldn't mind restating your name and address for the record.
My name is Trish Engel, and I'm the owner of three thirteen, three fifteen, South California.
Thank you, Ms. Engel. And I promise you, it's not that the board doesn't want to know more about you, but they know a lot about you from the findings of fact. So, I'm just going to ask you a single question, and that is, if you were to continue to testify here today, would the testimony that you provide be consistent with the statements that were made in the findings of fact, as well as your affidavit and the supplemental information that was provided to the board prior to this hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, I know you like to talk. We're going to keep it, keep it a little short today. Mr. O'Brien, can you once more state your name?
Hot call in kettle black.
I know. But I'm fine. Did we forget on the record? I am going to request a copy of the transcript.
I thank you. I only follow her lead.
I don't know. I, this is a drop-the-mic moment. Can I just rest? Thank you. And so, Mr. O'Brien, may you state your name and address for the record?
Terrence O'Brien, maintain offices at one-four-five Revere Drive, Northbrook, Illinois.
Similarly, you were retained to evaluate whether or not the proposed special use for a dog daycare center at this site meets all the standards and requirements for a special use as set forth under the current zoning ordinance. You have prepared a report, which was tendered to the board, which evaluated these standards and set forth your opinions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And Mr. O'Brien, if you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in your report, but for the parts that are related to the variation that was withdrawn?
Yes, that would, it would confirm with what, confine with what, or go along with what I've got within my report other than the variation which has been withdrawn from the application.
So, then, Mr. O'Brien, is it your professional opinion that the proposed daycare facility as designed and programmed does in fact meet all of the requirements for a special use as set forth under the current zoning ordinance?
Yes, I believe it does.
Thank you. Mr. Dassie, may you please state your name and address once more for the record?
My name is Christopher Dassie. My offices are at fifty-nine thirty Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana.
And Mr. Dassie, you were retained by the applicant in order to design the programming for the proposed new building and related improvements at the subject property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And similarly, if you were to continue to testify here today with the testimony that you provided, be consistent with the statements that were made in the findings of fact as well as our written responses to the Department of Planning and Development and the supplemental materials provided prior to this hearing?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have.
Just a question. Did I have everybody raise their right hand and, and swear them in at the beginning?
You did.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, not today.
No. We can do it again, though.
No, no, no. We're good. We're good.
I think I'm under my four minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, we're going to keep it that way. Thank you very much. Oh, actually, we've got, Ms. Peña. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. One quick correction on the recommendation. The section of code that was referenced in the letter was section four dash thirty-eight dash zero-six-zero. It's supposed to read four dash three-eight-four dash zero-six-zero. There's a missing four after the eight.
Okay. All right. So, that is corrected on the record.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? None. We will take this under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case, three twenty-eight, twenty-three S, eight thirty, eight fifty-three, fifty, fifty-seven, North Leamington.
You know what? We better take, actually, all right, we just lost Quorum. Yeah, yeah. I think he's going to request a continuance now. So, I think we can. Okay. Good morning. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. It's the recommendation for calendar number three twenty-eight dash twenty-three dash S. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a transitional residence with twenty-seven bedrooms and thirty beds to house women diagnosed with a substance use disorder, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Phoenix Recovery Support Services, LLC. Two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the building plans and elevations dated September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two. Three, the facility is utilized as transitional residence and provides treatment exclusively for residential psychological and behavioral therapy for justice-involved adult women with a diagnosed substance use disorder and adult women with diagnosed substance use disorder. And four, there are no more than thirty residents at a time." Counselor, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Friedland with the law firm of Applegate and Thorn Thompson. Here on behalf of Phoenix Recovery Support Services, I have with me today Sterling Gilderschleve, who is the CEO and president of Phoenix Recovery Support Services. who is the CEO and President of Phoenix Recovery Support Services, our project architect, Brian Hudson, and our land planning expert, Kareem Musawar.
And the board recognizes Mr. Musawar's expertise.
Thank you.
You can also proceed with the short form and we'll open it up for board questions.
So, as you stated, the request here is to establish a special use for a transitional residence to provide services to up to 30 women who are, have substance abuse disorder. Mr. Gildersleve provided an affidavit as part of our application. I'll start with him. Mr. Gildersleve, would you please state your name and position for the record?
Yes, my name is Sterling Gildersleve and I'm President and CEO of Phoenix Recovery Support Services.
Thank you. And you provided an affidavit in support of the application. If you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that you made in that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Nothing further. I would go now to Mr. Musawar. Kareem, could you please state your name for the record?
Kareem Musawar.
And as part of our application, you provided a land use report in which you analyzed the property and the proposed use, and you came to the determination that this proposed use would meet the standards of the zoning ordinance for a special use. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify today, you would testify as consistent with all of the statements and findings in that report?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson, we actually didn't submit an affidavit for Mr. Hudson, so I think he's here to answer any questions you might have, but we're comfortable with the testimony from the, from the-
Okay, great. And as far as communications with the alderman, Alderman Mitz?
Mitz.
Yeah. She's in support of this as well?
Yes. And she actually, as part of our application, we included a letter of support from Alderman Mitz. I would just state for the record that Phoenix Recovery is in the process of getting funds from the Illinois Development Housing Authority for this. So Sterling and his staff have been in touch with the alderman and the city quite a bit on this project.
Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's recall 325-23-Z. All right. So we're back with Mr. Donner. And it's my understanding that you're going to request a continuance?
Correct.
Okay. And is November all right for you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So this is calendar number 325-23-Z. Will be continued to the 2:00 PM session of November 17, 2023, and no further notice will be given.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. This is the recommendation for calendar number 329-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed gas station with expanded lot area and construction of a new, single-story, multi-tenant building with gas station, convenience store, and two additional retail tenant spaces, strip center, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Division and Pulaski LLC. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan, parking site plan, truck turning radius plan dated December 1, 2022; the floor plan and west and south elevations dated October 11, 2022; east and north elevations dated June 8, 2022, all prepared by Proyekt Studio LLC. Before you begin, Counselor, the board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise, and you can proceed with the short form and we'll open it up for board questions.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney with offices at 77 West Washington. I represent the applicant. And I have with me today, seated next to me, Haney Khalil on behalf of the applicant. I've got Gregory, next to him, Gregory Jomek, project architect from the firm that prepared those plans that were just referenced, and Joe Ryan, our expert witness. And very simply, just one case, special use for the gas station. And the property is presently improved to gas station. It's an old gas station, been there for years. The applicant currently operates the gas station on the site and has for several years. And very simply, there's an old gas station building on site that's currently used, and the project calls to demolish the existing old building and build a new building that would contain a modern convenience store. So with that, my first witness would be Haney Khalil. Haney, state your name and your business address.
My name is Haney Khalil, owner of 3959 West Division.
And, Haney, is it true you are the manager of the Division and Pulaski LLC?
Correct.
And your LLC also owns the subject property?
Yes.
And that I state correctly, the plan is to demolish the old building and build a new building, which would contain a new convenience store?
Correct.
And you signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you, true that your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Correct.
Thank you. Next witness would be Gregory Jomek. Gregory, would you state your name and your business address?
Gregory Jomek, company name is Proyekt Studio LLC, 2810 RFD, Long Grove, Illinois.
And Gregory, true that you firm prepared the plans referenced in the recommendation letter?
Yes.
And Gregory, also true that you signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes.
And if I were to continue to question you, also true that your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. That's all I have of Gregory. Joe Ryan, please state your name and your address.
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Joe, is it true that you visited the site and prepared a report in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
And we submitted that report on your behalf?
Yes.
Joe, also true that the proposed special use complies, in your opinion, the proposed special use complies with all applicable standards of the Chicago zoning ordinance?
I examined each of them and it did.
Joe, also true, if I continue to question you, your answers to my questions would be consistent with the materials contained in your report?
Yes.
That's all I have of Mr. Ryan.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going slightly out of order, case number 337-23-S, 320 West 83rd Street.
While everyone is getting situated, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation. This is the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation for calendar number 337-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a cannabis infuser facility, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, One Green Roots Inc. Two, no retail sales, samples, or physical product displays or stock are allowed at the facility. Three, no cannabis growing or production are allowed at this facility. Four, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the proposed site plan, existing plan, existing elevations, proposed floor plan, proposed roof plan, proposed elevations, interior elevations, equipment plan, landscape plan, ADA ramp section detail, landscape details, and trash enclosure plan dated August 8, 2023, and the mechanical floor plan dated March 31, 2023, all prepared by Architectonic Solutions, Inc., and the odor control plan dated September 14, 2023, prepared by Cameron Kaluch. And five, details and final design for the odor control system and components, including but not limited to the size, type, and location of equipment, filters, rooftop mechanical units, and exterior system exhaust, et cetera, and details on the design and location of the airlocks, system layout, et cetera, are reviewed and approved by Chicago Department of Public Health prior to issuance of any permits. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Kerwin's expertise. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form and then we will open it up for board questions.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. My name, good morning to you and the members of the distinguished board. My name is Dean T. Marigus, and I am the attorney for the applicant for the special use, One Green Roots, Inc. Our law offices are located at 1 North of South Street here in Chicago. With me here today is our appraiser, Bud Kerwin, the applicant, Hamad Ahmad, Cameron Kaluchi, our consultant, and Oscar Alba, our architect. The applicant is seeking to establish a cannabis infuser facility within the existing one-story building at approximately 7,330 square feet of a 27,573 square foot building. And this includes a secure interior loading and unloading area. There are approximately existing onsite parking spaces. The existing building is a vacant commercial building. The current zoning for the parcel is M21 Light Industry District. This facility is not open to the public. We have conducted two community meetings, and there was no opposition voiced to our project at either meeting by the public. We have been working with Alderman Brookins, Alderman Hall, and Alderman Mosley, who have tendered letters of full support for the special use to be granted to the applicant. We have tendered these support letters to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And, Mr. Chairman, I have extra copies in the event that you do not have them in front of you.
We have them.
Excellent. Thank you. I would first like to call Mr. Bud Kerwin, our appraiser, and you've always already, and I appreciate the board certifying him as an expert. Mr. Kerwin, could you please state your name and address, please?
Sylvester J. Kerwin, Jr. I'm president and owner of SJ Kerwin and Associates, real estate appraisers and consultants. My offices are at 7765 West North Avenue in River Forest, Illinois.
And, Mr. Kerwin, are you a member of the Appraisal Institute with the MAI designation?
Yes, I am, and I'm also a licensed certified general appraiser in the state of Illinois.
And it is correct that you have testified before the Zoning Board of Appeals on numerous occasions?
Yes.
It is also correct, and we asked this question, were you requested by me to review the special use application for the proposed establishment of a cannabis infuser use within the existing building?
Yes, I was, and I prepared a report on that.
And did you also personally inspect the property and surrounding neighbors before and soon to this hearing?
Yes, on several occasion, and most recently, it was earlier this week on September 11th, Monday.
And was, is it correct that the subject property is zoned M21 Light Industry District?
Yes, that's correct.
Is the, is it correct that a cannabis infuser license is permitted by, quote, by right within the M21 Light Industry District when such use is located more than 660 feet from the residential district according to Use Standard 179-0129?
Yes, it is.
And is the subject proposed infuser use located 450 feet from the closest residential district? Is that correct?
Yes, the proposed infuser use is the 460 feet from the north property line. But actually, it will be about 586 feet away from the residential district because the infuser space is located at the front portion of the subject building along the 83rd Street, and it's 125 feet in depth. So in reality, the difference is about 74 feet short of that 660 requirement.
Is it correct that the proposed infuser operation will occupy 7,330 square feet or 27% of the building, with a building total of 27,573 square feet?
Yes, and I understand the applicant is going to lease that portion of the space for a five-year period.
And is it also correct there is a larger adjoining paved parking lot for the employees?
Yes.
After making your inspections and completing your research and analysis, did you determine that the proposed cannabis infuser use would be an appropriate use and compatible with the other surrounding land uses?
Yes, I did.
Counselor, you can have him swear to his report.
Okay. I don't know. This is an important first impression, and I'm glad you told me that because I was willing to-
Go ahead.
-go through all the-
Right.
So, Mr. Kerwin, due to the shortness of time, does the proposed infuser application meet all the standards for the Chicago Building Code?
Yes, it does. This has been a vacant building for a number of years. Previously, it's about a 60-year-old building, has been occupied, but as I said, vacant in more recent times. The proposal for this use, I examined six or seven other properties that are located in my report, and I found no adverse impact as a result of a cannabis-related use within the districts of those properties. There's been a market demand in more recent years after cannabis has been approved by the state and the city officials there. I'm trying to think of what else. And lastly, it does, and is reflected in my report in much greater detail, it complies with all the standards of the zoning ordinance.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that report, correct?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was my next question. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kerwin. Our next witness is Cameron Kaluchi. Cameron, could you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, Cameron Kaluchi, 2116th Street, Denver, Colorado, 80202.
And you are the authorized business consultant for this cannabis infuser facility?
I am, yes.
In May 2009, did you receive a Bachelor of Arts degree in cognitive neuroscience from the University of Denver?
I did, yes.
And from 2009 to the present, have you been an owner, manager, founder, director, executive vice president, and chief executive officer of many multimillion-dollar cannabis infuser companies?
I have, yes.
I refer to your resume, did you work as a CEO for Kelsey Biotech?
Yes.
And were you the executive vice president of Zantana Management Services?
Yes.
And were you the founder and advisor of NYSK at one of the first licensed GMP cannabis facilities in Europe?
Yes, I was.
Are you the director of the Native American Sports Council?
Yes.
This is a nonprofit that focused on promoting, promoting health and wellness to the Native American communities. Lastly, were you the executive vice president and native, of the Native Communities Development Corp.?
Yes.
In addition to these agencies, do you personally hold six cannabis licenses in Colorado for infusion and two cultivation?
Yes, with the recent exception, we divested or resold two of those licenses and are currently in the process of purchasing two additional licenses.
And you are an awarded licensee for cultivation in New Jersey?
Correct.
And you also have an application before the Alabama State for another facility?
Correct, and in Texas. Correct, and in Texas.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that Cameron Khaluchi be certified as an expert in cannabis-infuser operations and management and their effect on the communities around the infuser facility.
The board will recognize his expertise.
Thank you very much. Mr. Khaluchi, please answer the following questions. What are the hours of operation?
7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
And how many employees will work at the facility?
Initially, 7 to 12.
And will there be armed guards?
You can have him swear, though, to his affidavits as well. I mean, the hours of operation, they're in, they're in your submittal, so we've got it.
I'm just trying to be thorough here. As I said, this is an application of first impression.
Yeah, I understand that. We've reviewed your written materials, though. I don't, I don't need to hear it again.
Thank you, not a problem. Carmen, Cameron, would it be, if you were allowed to continue to testify, would your testimony be exactly as to the affidavit and findings of fact and other documents filed?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. The next witness would be Hamad Ahmad, who is the applicant. Mr. Ahmad, could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Hamad Ahmad. My address is 430 North Walnut Street, Almhurst, Illinois.
And are you the sole shareholder of applicant One Green Roots, Inc.?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, I only have seven questions here, and I'll make them quick. I think it's, you tell, I'm in your tent.
If you're, if you're just reciting what's in the findings of fact and the affidavits, then-
Okay.
-then I don't need it.
His testimony is not in there.
Okay.
So, will you be managing the operations of One Green Roots, Inc. with our expert, Carmen Khaluchi?
Yes.
And have you had extensive experience in managing companies?
Yes.
From 2010 to 2016, were you the founder, president, and CEO of CPAP Supply Depot, which is an e-commerce medical supply business, which you managed a full-time staff of 12?
Yes.
And did you sell the business in 2016?
Yes.
And from 2014 to the present, are you the founder and sole shareholder, president and CEO of HS Wholesale Limited?
Yes.
And this is a business-to-business distribution company that supplies dispensaries and smoke shops?
Yes.
In addition to being the sole shareholder of HS Wholesale, are you also the president and CEO of that organization?
Yes.
And you currently manage 120 HS employees?
Yes.
Are you the only signatory on behalf of the tenant on the five-year lease at 320 West 83rd Street?
Yes.
Do you have any intention of selling the property, of selling the business, I'm sorry?
No.
If you were called on to testify, would your testimony be identical to that of the documents already submitted, including your affidavit?
Yes.
Okay, the next witness is our architect, Oscar Alba. Oscar?
Oscar Alba, architect licensed in the state of Illinois.
And Oscar, are you the designated architect for this project?
Yes.
And if you were called, and you prepared the plans, floor plan, site plans, landscape plans, all of the various documents required by the city in the application, did you prepare them?
Yes.
If you were to ask, if you were, if you were asked to continue to testify here at this hearing, would your answers be identical to those already submitted in your affidavit and also in the plans of operation?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that ends our case in chief, and we're open for any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Just one question. What, in addition to outreach to the Alderman, which is appreciated, was there further community meetings?
Yes, we had two community meetings. At both times, there was no opposition stated at all. And if you need the addresses on the record, I can do that. One was held on Monday, February 27, at the Bordeaux Griffin Design Center at 8237 South Princeton, and the second was held on August 2 at 8,000 South Michigan Avenue with the West Chatham Improvement Association and the Alderman being present, and they approved this project at both of those events.
And how was notice disseminated for those people?
We disseminated the notice in accordance with 17130905G, and also, the Alderman Hall wanted to send out the notices, and he did so. We had there approximately 20 to 25 people at that hearing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Going slightly out of order, case 33723-S, 1365 through 67 West 37th Street.
All right, while everyone's getting situated, I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 339-23-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a cannabis-infuser facility, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Uprise Products Illinois LLC, two, no retail, sales, samples, or physical product displays or stock are allowed at this facility, three, no cannabis growing or production are allowed at this facility, four, the development is consistent with the site plan, construction plan, elevations, demolition plan dated August 11, 2023, all prepared by Eastlake Studios, and the mechanical plan and mechanical details dated May 3, 2023, prepared by Blake MEP, and the odor mitigation plan dated September 14, 2023, prepared by Uprise Products Illinois LLC, and five, details and final design for the odor control system and components, including but not limited to the size, type, and location of equipment, filters, rooftop mechanical units, and exterior system exhaust, et cetera, and details on the design and location of the airlocks, system layout, et cetera, are reviewed and approved by Chicago Department of Public Health prior to issuance of any permits. Will everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form, and I just want to say, I know infusers are newer to us, but the submittal is very extensive, so if there's something that you briefly want to highlight, that's okay, but I don't need you to recite your findings of fact. Fair enough. Easy in and easy out, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Do you have our Aldermanic letter of support? That was the only thing that I wanted to make sure was in the record. Yes, yes, we have it, yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, not to belabor the point, I have with me Jamie Finnegan. Jamie, if you could introduce yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, James Finnegan is the founder of Uprise Products LLC.
And Jamie, you were provided with a copy of our findings of fact and prepared an affidavit in submission with those findings of fact, and if you were to continue to testify here today, you would testify consistent with that affidavit, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Mr. Golar?
Sorry about that. Saquon Golar, 12915 South May Street, Cayman Park, Illinois, with Rescuit Security Services.
And, Mr. Golar, in your services as a security consultant, you prepared an affidavit in support of the findings of fact, and if you were to continue to testify here today, you would testify consistent with those, with that affidavit, correct?
Yes.
Jamie, if you could introduce yourself.
I'm Jamie Magaliff, with Eastlake Studio, the architect on the project, 311 Florence Avenue, Evanston, Illinois, 60202.
And Jamie, as the project architect, you prepared an affidavit and submitted it with our findings of fact, and if you were to continue to testify here today, you would testify consistent with that affidavit, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Ryan. Oh, and just to make sure, his expertise has been recognized. Yes, the board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. Thank you, sir. Mr. Ryan, as the expert on this matter, you were asked to examine the site and consider the proposed facility and the intended use, and prepared a report in support of the conclusion that the special use meets the criteria under the statute, is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to testify here today, or continue to testify, you would testify consistent with the finding in that report?
I would.
Mr. Chairman, there is one point of order. Our general counsel and diversity, diversity witness, Ms. Karina Sanchez, had to leave to get some tests drawn for surgery tomorrow. She is not, she's a witness who was going to testify about our social equity status and our diversity plans. Mr. Finnegan developed those plans, and I can have him swear to her affidavit, if that's all right.
Sure.
Mr. Finnegan, you have reviewed the affidavit prepared and submitted by Ms. Karina Sanchez in support of our findings of fact, correct?
That's correct.
And if asked to do so, and you would testify consistent today with that affidavit?
I will.
All right. Okay. Any questions from the board?
Could you just confirm the community meetings that were held and that notice was given consistent with the statutory requirements?
Absolutely, it was. The, the community meetings, well, we met with the Alderman several times and have her letter of support, and then the, the community meeting took place on Monday, March 13, at 10:00 AM, and the proper statutory notice was provided to everybody. This is down in a PMD8 around Iron Street, Mars Brewing. Nobody came because there's no one who lives there.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
None.
We will take this under advisement. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, before we call our next case, I'm going to move that we take a short recess to 10:55. Commissioner Rao seconds. Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Rao?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in recess until 10:55.